We're going to, let's see here, pledge allegiance. Crystal, I'll let you do it.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in this world, with the freedom of justice for all.
Okay. Call to order, roll call please.
Douglas CD.
Here.
John Fairchild.
Here.
Christopher Gadway.
Here.
Patty Leclerc.
Here.
Cheryl McKenzie.
Here.
Ed Marin.
Here.
Crystal Palmer.
Here.
Nicole Pupour.
Here.
Richard Sears.
Here.
And Riley Luckin.
Here.
All right. Result of the superintendent's schools are commenced to the board of education to approve the agenda, motion please.
Motion.
Cole, second.
I'll second.
Done. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right, presentations. Mr. Maddox.
So hopefully everybody can hear me well. It's always that time of year where it's sad to see some great employees go, but it's also great to celebrate their amazing service to the district. So we'll start with one of our great counselors who's done so many things for our kids over 24 years of service here at Beadmentown, helps so many kids in so many ways, whether it's mental health or just helping kids get into college. We'd like to congratulate Andre Sapp on her retirement. Prior to her service at Beadmentown, I believe she had service in the armed forces as well, right?
Yes. Yeah, second career.
So the next one, we will say thank you to Anna Caesar for her 15 years of service here at Beadmentown as an art teacher, giving our kids a love of art, and my kids, my biologicals have benefited from her. And I believe she is heading off to warmer climates in other states. We wish her well over travels.
You sure you don't want to come back for winter?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry. Thank you very much.
Yes. Then another counselor came in about the same time as Andre. Mr. King is celebrating roughly 24, 25 years of service with the district. Mr. King is still on his A-game, as is all of our retirees. I talk to him regularly in the hallway as he greets the kids every morning. Congratulations, Mr. King. I believe we may have roped Mr. King into some service next year with our therapy dogs. Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And finally, excuse me, not finally, but 20 great years of service as a library media specialist in the district, always working to stay on the cutting edge. We'd like to thank Rebecca Banker for her service. And finally, this retirement plaque recognizes over 30 years of service with the district, helping us and our support staff. Ms. Crystal, am I going to say this right, Quillian? Congratulations. She has this distinction of serving in one of the most difficult jobs, I say every year. It's difficult when you're teaching kids and you have 25 or 28 kids in front of you. She has to keep 28 to 40 kids behind her under control as a bus driver. She's done a great job.
Thank you so much. For a lot of lives.
Thank you. All right. To a distinguished board member. Mr. McKenzie. Sure, but very effective, I have to say. Very few people put so many questions in email in discussion, but it's the best thing for us is to bring up thoughts that other people might have and have some discussion about it. We appreciate your time. And Ms. Palmer. Another one. Same, great approach to being a board member, always very positive, and I'm sure you'll still be involved quite a bit.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I met this individual many years ago and then saw him go through middle school. He was very inquisitive with project-based learning and some of our STEM, some of our STEM learning. Then he's moved on to been a leader in our high school for a number of years, culminating in his service this year as a board member. It's great to always talk to Riley, Riley's got great ideas for his future, but also for the future of our kids. So Riley, we'd like to present you with this token for your service as a board member. We love Riley. We don't always say yes to Riley because Riley actually wanted to ride his horse to school on the last day of school. Instead, he's driving his pickup truck with his cowboy hat. So, great job, Riley, thank you. And lastly, this is a nice award to commemorate Polly's, actually Polly, you're going to have two of these, this is her tenure for the second time in this district, but Polly Taverney is receiving tenure as Beadmentown Central School. The second time. Liz, we don't know Polly's our assistant superintendent. Congratulations, Polly. I think that concludes it.
Yeah. All right. And next one is health clinics and mental health providers.
Yeah, so before we introduce Liz Cole, who will talk about our partnership that's dated back of maybe nine years now with PHSN, we'd like to have, part of our mental health strategy is to use a lot of services and a lot from a lot of different directions. Sometimes it's physical health, overall health, mental health, but we have in the back, we have two of our Cumberland Head Elementary School teachers who wanted to come down with one of my favorite new members of the Beadmentown School community, Lacy May. And I think they have a gift. Now, this is rare because as a volunteer board member, you rarely receive gifts, you might receive some complaints, but today they have a gift for you. So Gail, can you tell us how we're utilizing Lacy May throughout our school community?
Sure. So she spends 15 hours a week in the district amongst all the schools, and she is your vice for mental health with the counselors, mainly based out of the school right now with Mr. King, who's one of her top handlers for peer mediation, any type of lunch bunch. She goes with Mr. Frichette in the high school for also lunch bunch, peer mediation. We also use her for project-based learning, and that is where this book came from. The project in fourth grade decided, Lacy, we hired her for every Friday in the month of December, she came in with her handler, and Ms. Mau answered questions that the kids had about Lacy. And the kids' job was to come up with a tail, T-A-I-L, with Lacy May, anything they wanted to do, if they wanted to be her handler, if they wanted to swim with her, if they wanted to camp with her, anything they wanted to do, but they had to ask questions to make sure that she would like to do it, or maybe she wouldn't like to do it, or how she would react. And then, so that was the one week. The second week, Ms. Mau talked about her likes and brought in her favorite toys, favorite things to do. And then the third week, the kids, as they were writing, got to say, hey, you know, what's her favorite color, or hey, what's your favorite tree? So then they incorporated all these things into the book, and then we contacted one of our local publishers, the Northeast Group, and they were very willing, Lacy also works for EMH as a therapy dog there for rehabilitation, so they were very willing to get involved with this project. And we did not think they were going to publish it, publish it, we thought maybe it would be photocopy, send it away to a publisher. The publisher called me and said, you want me to fix the capitalization, fix the punctuation? I was like, no, this is fourth grade. So all of the illustrations, including the cover, and all the illustrations are all done by the 87 fourth graders at Cumberland Head Elementary School. So it was huge, it was huge for the kids. We kept it a secret, and then we had a revealing of the book, and the kids were just like, we're published authors, which they are, you know? So it was great. We ordered over 500 books, so we gave each of the kids one, the libraries each had one, the board members have one, and we also opened it up to the parents and the community. Lake Forest Retirement Home ordered four of them for the book club. So Lacy goes in there to visit them, and they had contacted Beadmentown, did not put two and two together, and then I contacted Lilia, and I was like, hey, it's me, and she was like, oh, great. So they're doing a book club about the book. So it's been wonderful. So thank you, thank you for the opportunity because it's been great. She's done a couple of other project-based learning. In David Yontop's class, they made treat machines, and she had to try them out, so they had to measure her, her distance, and some of them, you know, the paws, oops, too small, they had to redo them. In one of the science classes, they did what colors dogs can see. In Tony Perez's class, they did a great, I don't know, what do you call it, something that you feel about, right? Like what you would tell about.
Yeah, a lot of social, emotional.
Yeah, social, emotional. The kids came up with some, you know, great ideas. So she's been getting out there, and Jen Goodwin did a writing, a creative writing with her. So any of the teachers who wanted to work with her, they just sign up, and then that's where she goes, and in between, she's all around the school. I walk by and they go, hey, that's Lacy May, and I go, hey. And I'm sure Mr. Frichette, they say, hey, Lacy May, I'm Mr. Frichette. She's also done some health-related, pretty amazing things, which I have not seen personally, but I know that Mr. Bazil, Mr. Frichette, has seen them personally, which we didn't know that she could do. She steps out, different things at EMH, she had stepped out a couple of men that had seizures and alerted people to that, so that's, didn't know she was, we knew she was cool, but not that cool. So yeah, but here she is.
So one of the great parts about the day when we handed out the books to all the students is those 87 kids in the gymnasium were all, and the teachers had to leave to go talk to the media, and all those kids just opened the book and just started reading their pieces to each other, and they just had their nose in the book for like 45 minutes, and it was just.
And they still do. I have a lot of kids, like, you know, sit, stay in retirement room, you too, they'll take out the Lacy May book and start to read it.
That's great.
So, you know, the kids are involved in it, they want to read it.
And lastly, so high school starts regents exam, so they won't be in starting tomorrow, right? But soon, I think, we're going to finish the last two weeks of school, bringing two more therapy dogs into the middle school and the both elementaries. And she can't go to sleep right now. Thank you. Thanks. So our next part of the presentation about what we're doing at Beadmentown as we try to find so many services for our overall health and our mental health is, we're going to have Liz Cole, who's the vice president of operations for Behavior Health Services North, who we work with all the time, and she's, they're always trying to stay, if you want to go to that, have you, stay at the cutting edge, and they're always coming up with great ideas, and we're always willing to help them, try them out, and see if they work well for kids, because they always sound like they will.
So many of you know me actually as Beadmentown's first school-based counselor, and I was reminded as I was driving up how I once ran after a kid down the road in wheels and a skirt, eight years ago. So we've actually been embedded and partnered with the school for the last eight years. I'm going to share a little bit of data because I think it's really interesting, and it shows the perspective of the impact of what we've had and been able to do in our partnership of being able to embed mental health support right into the schools over the years. So across Clinton County, we have served over 2,500 students over the last eight years. And now, when you think of that number, it might not seem like a lot when you're combining all of the districts together, but when we think about what traditional mental health therapy is and bringing in the other factors that come with it, typically our parents are not consistent with treatment for our kids. So they may be referred, and a lot of you may be the people that make the referrals, but their consistency and getting treatment is very few and hard to beat. So that number is significantly very impactful. For Beadmentown, just as a district, we have provided 523 students with consistent mental health services over the last eight years. And it's really powerful because Beadmentown has been one of the most progressive districts from a mental health perspective from the start of our program. You were the first district that went from one clinician to two, from two to three, from three to four. And that's really powerful because there was a time where we were trying to, there might have been other districts or other partners that were trying to kind of build this relationship with Beadmentown members, stopped and said, no, no, you can't come in. And what ended up happening is you gave up access to the gifts who would not otherwise have it if you weren't embedded in the schools. And not only that, but you allowed us to be able to work in partnership with your teachers, bus drivers, monitors, administrators, to be able to come together and actually get the information, and be critical in the treatment of our students. And I will forever remember in my career, walking into the building and having a conversation with a care manager, with Karen, one of my students who was really high risk, and everybody told me everything was good. And then I walked into the office, and it might have been Dave, I can't remember who it was at the time, but they said, hey, Johnny overdosed, I'm K2, what do you think? Wow, nobody told me that. Thank you so much for that information, that's going to help me treat them better. So then I was able to go into my appointment with Johnny and say, Johnny, how's it going? He goes, good. Great? Really? And yeah, it's good. Well, I just heard you overdosed, I'm K2, you're 42. Not so great. But that piece of information allowed me to go to the next level in treatment as a therapist. And that is a gift for us, when we can have that communication and that relationship, and that ability to really treat the student out of the hole, because we know we don't get it from our families, our parents. So with some of those other numbers of the 523 students we've served, we have been able to provide 115 students with consistent medication management. And for some of our students, that's critical for them to sit in their seats every day. We've also provided over 400 called crisis services. And that's actually really low because there's data pool I can't pull from our mobile crisis team that is here, and I think was actually here today. In all of the last eight years, we've provided over 27,000 services. Why? It's something that everybody should be really proud of. And I think that's how we move to taking care of our kids from a whole person perspective. Because if we continue to take care of them and set, we're not going to see the outcomes, and we're not going to be able to see the wellness in which they can reach their full potential, or even from a freedom perspective, get to the next level to hopefully be successful adults, that when they do hit a bump, which we know we do have adult all the time, right? That they can reach and they can advocate for support for themselves. And that's incredible. So one of the things that we're working on right now, which I'm really excited about, and this is another way of thinking kind of bigger picture, and how do we create in a workforce that is so limited, it's across the world right now, but across the country that we're seeing workforce issues. But we're really looking at a creative measure of how do we provide support in the in-between? So many of you know, for students and families who receive services, they're not just getting the psychotherapy from the clinicians, but they're also getting social determinate linkage from our care coordinators, they meet with our nurses to review their physical states, and our providers to get medication management. So we're constantly looking at a whole person, and how can we come together to make sure those supports are in place? This position that we're creating right now is going to be called intervention specialists. They're going to work hand in hand with you to identify and to work to de-escalate students and also make sure that they're properly linked. So they're going to do kind of what we're calling a triage, to say, if there's a student that's struggling, let's get this person in, they are going to be the point person, they will de-escalate, they will assess their current state and their risk level to determine if they do need to see a clinician or clinician that's on site, or they need to go to the hospital or so on and so forth. The hope, and what I think will happen, is we'll identify that there's a piece missing. And a lot of times, if it's a missing crisis, their games aren't getting better. And it might be because they didn't have food the night before, or it might be because they watched their mom be abused the night before, and they're not going to be able to function during the op- that day, or they're not going to sit on the rug in the circle. So it's making sure that at that point we can come in and we can identify what it is. And it might be that they need to see their therapist that's in the school, it might be that they need to be linked outside of the school to get a therapy, a consistent therapy approach, or it might be that there's other home-based community support, such as CFTSS or home-based community supports for their families, that they need that are actually in the home. So a big part of what it's going to be is someone who's assessing, triaging, linking, and then making sure that the pieces are coming together. This is brand new, we're going to be piloting it. Beadmentown is my pilot school, which I love so much because I think we have done some really great things over the years by just trying something. And right now, we have two that are going to be coming on, they're going to be working very closely with my clinical supervisor, so they're going to have clinical consultation. One is coming in with some really great crisis experience, but it's being able to preserve some of the resources, whether that's by your school counselors, the teachers, or the mental health clinicians that are on site that have a caseload of kids to see. And then, once we can triage, we can identify the appropriate next steps, to hope that this kind of helps the in-between, and ultimately, it gets to be set up with consistent services, whether that's with us in the school or outside of the school. Again, our healthcare system is broken, as adults, we've kind of failed our kids, and I think the way that we get through the next couple of years, the next five years, 10 or 20 years, is having us come together and figure it out together. And that is really going to be how we do it, making sure that we're paying attention and we're reassessing what are the proper support, and how do we get our tips there? Then that's going to build hopefully strong, healthier adults that will be able to navigate through the challenges of adulthood, and we know we're great.
Thanks.
Have you take any questions or anything like that? I know you gave a lot of information.
What I'm most excited about this pilot is these folks will help us with the kids in crisis and lead them to the services they're going to need, whether they're internal or external services. But it will also allow our counselors and our school psychs and others to stay focused on the good work that they, that they're scheduled to do, whether it's a small group, a whole group, our SEL curriculum, and I'm sure we'll still have those people on call. Somebody, some people will be assigned in the building to be on call as well, because sometimes more than one crisis does happen, but it will certainly allow other folks to remain focused on the other learning that needs to happen here at Beadmentown. So it's a good partnership.
Absolutely. I think it's also, I mean, and the workforce is limited, so it's preserving the resources that we have and making sure we're functioning. We've talked about that sometimes, when you pull, you pull from one area to another, then that area next week is on fire, and we don't want to do that, so we're trying to make sure that this is the right person in between. And I'm excited for us to start this summer because we know we lose a lot of engagement from our kids and our families, and we even talked about it from a medication management side, you have kids that, oh, school's out, I'm off my medication. They don't may not need it, and that might be true, truth that they might not, but maybe this person starts working with the family and says, hey, and Johnny hasn't been taking his meds, it's August 10th, we should start getting back to them, because we want to prepare for them to be successful when he walks in the door on day one of the school year. So it's exciting stuff, we're definitely going to be working closely, working through cases, because we always have them, but knowing that hopefully this is a great relief to you guys, and hopefully we'll be moving in the right direction.
We're also starting this with grant funds, some of the federal grant funds, which we have available for two or three years, and we'll see how this, if this need goes away, which would be great, work yourself out of this job, right? But if it's something we still need, we dedicate, you know, some budget opportunities.
And I think, and that's part of kind of my role in it, and how do we create to be sustainable? And I've already got some ideas, so we're going to do a lot of data collection in the first couple of years, and that will help us create the evidence to fight.
If, so I know the focus is supporting the kids, but tangentially, there's a certain amount of support for the rest of the students, they may not be directly a part of it, just because you're helping those particular students, and then helping the teachers be able to focus on the collective, right? At what point do we start getting some feedback from this whole study on working with the staff and identifying what other components we can bring to them to help them out as well? How do we, how do we bring that whole picture, not just the students, but more for the students, but working with the staff as well?
I think that's another layer to it, I think, you know, we've had a lot of discussions around how do we educate and train our teams to manage things that they probably, I mean, we know that they're going to get at school, right? We need to get prepared to come into this world, and especially through a pandemic. It's funny, because I actually had a discussion with one of my clinicians today, and she said, you know, Liz, I presented this, and I trained all the teachers on kind of this triage response and how to manage this crisis piece, and she said, I will tell you, it's my crises that I've been getting pulled on have decreased. And I said, can you replicate that? And she goes, absolutely, and I said, great. We will do it everywhere, we'll put it in every district, we'll put it in front of every teacher, every counselor, whatever it might be, to help make sure that they have the resources to feel more prepared in managing the behaviors of our kids. So it's always something that we can review and kind of build in, and I think that's the phase that we're in. There's no rulebook right now for all of us, as we're trying to navigate through our world, especially in this pandemic and the effects of the pandemic, so I think it really is us as a, you know, professionals coming together and brainstorming how we do it.
And as we move forward, I think it's important to, it's hard to put dollars on this, right? And to qualify the value and the efficiency that it gives the whole institution, so that once the funding goes away, if it does, then we have a metric to be able to keep it coming, right?
Absolutely.
And we do pretty well collecting the data for you guys.
Yep, we pull a lot of the data, it's given us some direction. You know, one of the feats that I have in living in the healthcare world with regulators and insurance companies, and let me tell you, if they told me that was my career, I don't know if I would have moved that that direction. But some of it is the advocating with our health, our insurance providers, and if we can build a really solid case, there might even be an opportunity for us to go to our insurance providers and say, hey, this piece of support should be available service because look at what it's just provided, this kid, and this kid, and this kid, out of going to the ER, which we know is a lot more expensive than outpatient care. So there is definitely opportunity for us to create a case based off of evidence and data to hopefully fight for resources, and even if it's us coming together and building a grant together, that will take it to the next phase, I think there's a lot of opportunity for that. We definitely don't want to build something that we can't sustain, because we know it's a lot harder to take the services away, so our hope is that this is, this is here to stay, and it's another layer of our school-based program and the collaboration of school-based in our district.
Liz, I was just hoping everybody's mental health is going to be perfect.
You know what? That would be great, I could take a vacation.
We'll make it sustainable.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. High school career readiness.
Yes, so nine years ago, fortunate to have the job as superintendent of Beadmentown, all of our career readiness, with the exception of maybe Family Consumer Science and some of the tech work being done at the middle school, was you went to MOSIS. And, you know, it was difficult for those kids that gravitate towards some of this learning, you know, to stay in school and have something to look forward to. So a bunch of principals have done a great job creating these career readiness classes, and Principal Bazil is no exception, and he's going to lead you through what career readiness looks like now at Beadmentown.
All right, good evening, everybody. So I first just want to start by talking about one of the initiatives that the board did put through, one of those initiatives was paying for our students to have the AP courses, our CAT courses, our new enrollment courses, that's something that's now embedded into our budget, which is astounding, right? That's one of the things that is really great that we have for our students. That's one of the things that is really great that we have for our students to start this year. To give you a little background on that, we had 171 students take AP exams this year. 171 on our campus. So that's, you know, a big number for students taking new enrollment tests. And if they are higher, they get, they get college credit with their free college benefits with that. We also have 143 students taking what we call new enrollment classes through Clint Community College, Paul Smith's, and Syracuse University. So you can see the impact of what the board did on that and making that part of that. So parents do not have that obligation. Every student has that, that ability to get those credits now. So that's a really cool initiative. And one of the things I wanna do tonight is kind of tie that initiative to some of our career readiness. Because there are innocent components there that our students, we do have courses within our career path that go that route. So I just wanted to kind of bring more light to that. I know a lot of times our light is more on our college or AP or CAT or SUPA, all these other opportunities for those college students, right? But what does it look like for a kid that might not know that? So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention today and just give you kind of an idea of what we offer in the high school at this time for our students and what coursework they have and what we put in front of our kids every day to make them more marketable, you know, when they do need it. So our agricultural program has this welding. She's in her first year. We have four courses really within that curriculum right now. Those four courses are agricultural mechanics, agricultural food and natural resources, animal science, and plant science. One of the nice things about animal and plant science is that we can get a third credit for graduation for students, students get three science credits for graduating. One of those credits can be the animal and plant science. So the kid doesn't wanna go into, you know, per se, a biology class. Who hasn't been successful in, you know, foundations of earth science, right? We can get another full credit for something that's more interesting for the student that might go into the ag field with the animal and plant science. So that's a really nice little, you know, segue to give those kids what they need in an interest plan. Those are half-year courses. You have each semester, we have a small science first semester, plant second semester. We put plant second semester because if you look outside, right, it's a lot easier to grow plants out there now than it is in the fall. We also have, we've got ag food and resources. That is really our intro course. That's more for our ninth grade incoming students to get them, give them really a background of, of what ag is all about. And we have what is called, I'm talking about the second, it's the case certification. So that's a curriculum that that teacher uses and they're certified to teach that curriculum. And that curriculum is actually a CTE curriculum that's, you know, like CB Tech uses to provide their, their instruction. So it's really cool that we have that opportunity here with those resources. And our teacher is going actually through the training in the summer for, for week training on that piece. So you kind of see, right now we have 99 students currently enrolled in the ag courses. Pretty good number for students that, right, that can go into that career path of ag, might be interested in getting credits towards graduation. I mean, what the credits that they need, we can get electric credits for that. We can give those science credits towards those. So giving you a little bit of an idea, here's what the ag mechanics class looks like. You've probably seen in the bus garage, right, you have the, the bays up there. You kind of see some pictures of what that looks like. Our kids are welding in there every day through our ag mechanics course. Really cool. Obviously, yeah, they have that opportunity at, at CB Tech. We have it right here in our backyard. Our students are engaged in the welding process. They know how to do this. When they get, get out of here, that's a skill that they can go out there and do a lot of different things in the community and, and build a career after. So having that opportunity to be, to do that right in our backyard is, is pretty awesome. The other part of it is they work on small engines. I wish I could do that. I know my tractor breaks down and I gotta go get it to somebody, right? And I'm paying a whole bunch of money on how to get that fixed or my, my blower, my snow blower, or my, you know, any of the things that you use in your yard. They teach them how to repair those type of things. So that's a really cool aspect and skill. Once again, they can save you a lot of money and you can start your own business doing those types of things. So you can read the course description there. That's the course description that's up there. I know, I think it was in the board portal, this, this PowerPoint. You can kind of look at it, let them read through it. But just gave you a kind of synopsis of that's that course, the nutshell of the opportunities that those students are doing on a daily basis in that mechanics. That's a full year course. Animal science. So that's, you know, right there we have our rabbits, we have our chickens. You have, we just actually, pretty cool, we just got this year, hasn't been in yet, is a calf simulator. So it's kind of a cool thing that we're gonna do. And you can actually learn how to tag a calf. You can actually learn how to milk the calf. You can actually know how to take care of a calf through that simulator. So it's really cool. I'm kind of, you know, really excited for it to be here on campus. It's something different, right? Something that people don't have in a classroom. It is hands-on for our students to be able to build that capacity around animal science, right? Getting really into that ag, piece of it, farming and that aspect. And our ag teacher, this is what she is good at, the, the animal piece. She is, she, she's lived on a farm her life. This is what she really can hone in on. So she does a really good job of giving that information to our kids. And once again, you know, some of the resources we have, right? Putting that in front of our kids so that they can do that in the future is pretty cool, right? Do it right here in our backyard and in our, in our classrooms and have it accessible to our kids. So that's a really cool piece. They learn, you know, with interaction with animals, the chickens. They, I know I was doing a lesson, she was in the lesson the other day. Incubating eggs. What is the processing of that? How do you do that? What, you know, how do you know if they're getting fertilized or not? Having that conversation with our students and, you know, what does it take to do that? And they have the chickens and go through the process of, of, you know, cultivating those animals in their classrooms. So that's a cool piece that, you know, you'll see in every classroom, in every, in every district, right? There's only a few ag programs around what was up in IC. But other than that, there's not many. We're really unique in that piece of, of the curriculum. Plant science. You've all seen the nice, you know, you know, greenhouse that we have in the courtyard. We have the grow cards in the classroom. You've seen a lot of times where there's plants that flowers and they've had, you know, different sales of the flowers. We grow all those right through that, that class. She goes through the process of, you know, determination, making sure that how, how do you get the best, you know, access to get them to grow. And obviously, you can kind of see these most recent pictures, those are the ones in the classroom right now, the plants that they're growing. So that's another aspect of our ag program, right? You can grow, you know, you see a lot of money being made, right? Everybody bought flowers this, this spring, right? Like how much money you spent on flowers, right? Just alone. I mean, just to make your house look, you know, nice and pretty. I know I spent a lot of money on that. So that's a career that our kids can go into, learning that process and, and building flowers and having that for our kids is, is pretty cool. So a lot of money being made. You can leave here, you can create that, create your own business and do something like that. So you don't have to go to college. And that's what's cool about this, this curriculum. Here's the, the, this is our intro class, agricultural food and natural resources. That is the case program. So it gives you guys a little bit of an idea of the curriculum. It connects education and industry through purposeful curriculum. And that's what they use for, you know, I guess that CB Tech uses that curriculum when they're preparing students for the real, you know, the real environment of, of a CTE curriculum. So really cool that we have that and that career readiness empowering teachers to improve instructional practices. And she's going on that, actually, in a couple of weeks, she'll be spending her summer doing, you know, a full week training on that curriculum. So that's pretty cool that she's getting access to that, our kids. In the process of where I'd like to get to is that since she's been on a farm, we can actually start the process of trying to get CTE certified. Giving our kids CTE, what they can go over to the CB Tech and do, we can teach them here and do that process here. So the hard part there is you have to have someone that's worked in the field for three years. She has now, you know, she's a new teacher, she's in the first year. We're not gonna go crazy on her, try to get her into that piece of it. But that is the, the one for goals, trying to get those in our classrooms. And that's the curriculum you have to do to make sure you're in alignment with CTE. So that's the cool part of it. We're starting, you know, baby steps to get her trained in the curriculum that we need and then take it to that next level where now we're getting kids certificates from them. So that's kind of the cool thing about that. And that course was really nice is that's our intro course, right? That's our ninth graders. That's for the kids to get right off the bat and get that at ninth, fifth, seventh graders, first course of that. We also now we have a technology coursework, right? So we have the ag coursework. We also have the technology coursework. We have construction systems, structural structures, materials processing. We call it DVP and manufacturing systems. Right now, currently, we have 81 students enrolled in our tech courses. We also, that is kind of got down to the, the middle school too. So we have two courses in the middle school to try to make sure, to get that, that interest level up in eighth grade. So Mr. Horn does have two middle school classes that he does teach within tech, which is really cool. So that's part of that 81 number. But once again, 81 in that, 99 in that. We're getting a lot of type of students that, you know, are getting exposed to career readiness rather than just the typical core pattern, which is really cool. Kind of put these lumped into one, one kind of category of construction systems, structural structures, materials processing. That's your typical building, right? How do you, how do you build a house? How do you build a frame? How do you build, you know, how do you do concrete? Those are what they do in that classroom. They build walls, they build studs, they, you know, look at electrical, they look at how to run, you know, how to run electrical current. They look at those types of things in that classroom. So that's a really cool part of it. Now you can see a picture of the shop there. We also have that computer numerical control. It's the CNC. It's a really cool machine. They can calculate and do different types of systems within, within the tech and building office. So this is a great skill, right? Obviously, too, is, you know, construction. A lot of money you can make in construction. A lot of millionaires out there that have built houses and, and those constructions. This is where we start, right? Building those skills to be able to build something from the ground up. And that's what they, they do there in that, in that coursework. So those three kind of align more to your, your traditional type of tech courses where you're, you're building and building different types of, you know, structures. Then we have a kind of a shift, right? We have now more of the modern technology, 21st century technology that we did put through. We, in 135, we have what we call the CAD lab. You can kind of see a picture at the bottom of that. And this is what our students are in front of, or that innovative technology, things that are more innovative now and helping kids get in front of those so that they can go out in the real world and be able to learn and add these skills on these machines is pretty cool, right? You can see the 3D printers, you can see the vinyl cutter, poster maker, the laser engraver machine. So all those signs that we made through COVID, right? They were made on these machines, right? So all the signs you see, all the posters on our campus, on our floors, all the things that we can do are made through those signs in that process. That could be, once again, another skill that you could create a business and have, especially right now, they can come on. So getting our kids in, in front of those machines, creating that, that atmosphere so they know how to use that and get out of here on the resume and say, hey, I can use, you know, I can use a vinyl cutter poster maker. I can use a laser engraver. That's a skill that our kids are gonna have a lot of other kids do. So those courses, you can see the CAD course, the manufacturing systems, they're in front of those machines on a daily basis. The CAD program is really cool. We actually have 13 kids sign up for next year for this course. That is in alignment with Clint Community College. So those kids are going to get college credit for that course. That is part of that initiative, right, that we talked about with the board paying for students, you know, college credit. We're doing it through career and tying it through Clinton and having that conversation with them how maybe they can go to the, you know, the, the technology piece over there, right? Yeah. Do you have a question?
Yeah. That's fantastic that, I mean, CAD groups by engineering groups all over the place. Is, I'm just curious, like, you have to be on, does a student have to decide, I'm gonna go with the technology route and take all these courses or can they say, I just wanna take the CAD because I wanna go do something else with it?
Yeah. They, yeah, they could take that. We'd like to start, you know, we've started the process of the pathway, right? We like the pathways and trying to get them to build the skills so they can do it at that point. You know, a CAD class, you know, you start with the manufacturing systems and we like that process. Obviously, if a student wants to take the course, we have open enrollment. They can take the course. But we try to steer them in a direction where we're providing those skills prior to getting to a CAD course so they can be successful in that course and get, you know, they're gonna get the college credit because they're taking the course. It's really nice to take the credit. You'll get the course. And one of the nice things too recently, one of the barriers that we've worked with Clint Community College with was they had a lot of placement tests. The placement tests were, you know, for a CAD course, you had to take a math course. You had to get a certain score in math. It was pretty high level math for them to do too well with that. So the kids wouldn't be, we couldn't enroll certain students in that class because they couldn't pass the placement test to get the college credit. They didn't enroll, but they wouldn't get the college credit, right? So one of the conversations we've been, you know, when I first came in, there were a lot of conversations with Clint Community College. And they've moved away from those placement tests. It's a really nice idea. So now those students can get in that class and not interact with that and not necessarily have to take a placement test to get the credit. So they could come a long way there. That's where they've been the last couple of years. I'm not sure if they're ever gonna go back through that piece. I know COVID was a little bit, a little more lenient. And one of the things that I did is I moved to Paul Smith's because they didn't have placement tests. We have to go through that hoop of getting kids taking a test and might not be a good test. They take test, right? And we kids didn't take a test really well. So we wanted, still have a unique opportunity to take a, you know, get college credit without going that route. So we have, you know, we switched over a lot of our coursework to Paul Smith's because of that piece. So we have, had that piece come again. But this is a nice little, you know, the CAD courses through Clinton. We're tying it towards so that those kids can get those credits and go right over to Clinton after, right? And have that two-year degree right off the bat where they're, they're more marketable. So really cool opportunity again, like I said, kind of tying that college and career together, you know, within our career path. So really cool opportunity. One of the other things that we have and we purchased actually right before the pandemic is we have the Snap-on Tool Certification. This is a precision measuring kit. And this is a wonderful thing that we, our kids can get certified in. And the whole certification process of how to use the tools through COVID. When we had the whole touching thing, we kind of didn't touch the tools. So they kind of sat there for a little bit unfortunately. So we're gonna get back on that, you know, that's one of the initiatives next year. Get those in front of our kids, get our kids working on those. Where we can touch them again, not feel like they're gonna wait them off all the time, you know? So those are what you see, right, in, in mechanic garage. Those are what you see, you know, in, in all over the country, in different areas. And our kids will be have the certification to do the precision measurement. There's a bunch of different kits you can do. We felt like the precision measuring would align better with our tech, right? With, you know, you can utilize it for building a house, doing all these different things, all the machinery, machinery and tools. So that's why we look at that one. And then obviously, we could, we can build on that. Once we can get more certifications, we wanna start here to kind of see where it goes. Like I said, that's gonna be a huge initiative next year, trying to get that up and running when we can actually touch the tool to get them. So that's a cool initiative once again for college and career, right? That's a, that's a career readiness skill right there that we were gonna be on top. Our kids are gonna be on top, say, I know how to use Snap-on Tools which is better. They're gonna get a job where a kid doesn't have those, those skills. And that's what we're looking to do. So that's a great opportunity that they have. We also have business courses, right? So you've probably heard Mr. Lapierre, right? He's got our Eagle Mark. And that's kind of been here for quite a while. One of the things we did bring in a couple of years through Paul Smith's was our Introduction to Entrepreneur. That is a college new enrollment course. So, you know, we had a lot of kids in marketing, done a great job, right? The Eagle Mark you walked by, the kids are working in there, building those skills. A lot of those kids are gonna go into business degrees and entrepreneur, right? We wanna give them some college credit for that too as well. So we do have an Introduction to Entrepreneur course, which is pretty awesome. Kids get college credit for that. They work in the Eagle Mark, we have the marketing piece. They learn that process. And we also have what we call Career Finals in that, in that round of the business, business section. So I thought it'd be pretty cool that we had like a three-pronged career readiness approach. It kind of gets heavy sometimes, right? We talked a lot about colleges. We talked a lot about all the things that we have, you know, for college readiness. These are all the opportunities that our kids have. And look at the coursework that they can get enrolled in. And this is choice, right? When we do, when we do enrollment, we do open enrollment. Our students get to choose. And one of the things that we do is we do a, we call it Course Awareness Week. So every halfway through the year, we have all the teachers present these courses to our students during what we call the LP timeout form. So our kids get to see, hey, I really do think that that, that the course of the CAD course would be great for them. So they get to see if they wanna be part of that. When they go and talk about their course selections, they know what type of courses we have on. So they're not dormant. They're not, I did not hit them. We want our kids to be able to see it and interact with this thing. And then we just started, well, we started one Ready for Real partnership. And one of the things that we did with that is we worked closely with Ready for Real. And they can get a work readiness credential. What they do is they come into Mr. Horn's class and they present lessons on, you know, readiness for, for career, right? We're not talking college. We're talking more career readiness, the skills we need, resume building, aspects of being social in, in, in a, in a work atmosphere. And we have 20, and then basically you get a work readiness credential. They have to take an exam, pass the exam. So what they do as part of this process is they tutor for that exam. They give tutoring services and those students take the exam, get the work readiness credential once they get. Given 20, in two years, we have 26 students that got that credential. So those kids are coming out of Beaventown ahead of the game, other students that don't have that opportunity. We also have work experience to that program. So we have 12 students that replaced. Obviously, a little tougher, right? COVID's been kind of that 2020, kind of started with the COVID piece. We have 12 students that are replacing different types of work-study programs that hopefully those 12 students are not gonna go into that workforce to be part of that, that area. So that's another piece that's in there. They work on 20 lessons throughout the year. You can see kind of the things they talk about, multiple intelligences, communication, relationship health, decision-making, collaboration, things that are important in a, in a work, in a work field. So that's an opportunity for people to come in those classrooms, engage with our students and give them more opportunities in the career game. And then obviously, we have CB Tech, right? So CB Tech is, is one of those things that we, you know, we do have and we do offer. But as you can see, some of those things we can, we can bring back here on campus as you can see, some of those things we can, we can bring back here on campus and give opportunities here at Beetham Town, but also we have 76 students, on average, that go to C V Tech every year. You can see those are the categories that our students are currently in this year, those are what they're getting in C V Tech. And, you know, we have the, we have four students currently in New Visions, which is the, the medical and the, the instrument code. So a lot of wonderful opportunities, right? So we're not like, a lot of times we look at schools and we say, oh, we got a lot of college brands, but look at the opportunities we have for career values for our students and getting things in front of them every day. The other schools in this, in this area, I can guarantee people have not had that in front of their kids. And that's kudos to our board, that's kudos to our faculty, our staff, and all the work that they put in to make sure that these are opportunities and Mr. Penix provided those and saying, hey, yeah, this is a great idea, how you can make more, you know, and having that support from him has been wonderful throughout this process to make this stuff work, you know. There are a lot, a lot of moving parts to, to give these opportunities to our kids and it's pretty cool that they're a part of this. There's some technology and agricultural field trips that they've gone on this year. Just kind of, you know, some of the companies that you hear about in the area, right? Getting our kids in that building, getting those kids seeing what those, those companies do is important, right? It builds that vision for our kids and say, hey, I don't know anyone from a black state, but I can work for Norse, right? And I like that piece of it. And like you said, we're not trying to just build kids to go to college and building for career skills. You know, that lifelong learner, that, that piece of, you know, contribute to, you know, self, right, community itself is that vision we have. So that's what we're doing, right? So really cool opportunities to get our kids in these, in these areas so they can see it. And then, any questions?
Yeah, I just have one. Are there any chances that some of these students could like internship or do some type of, you know, like a work study that have these industries?
So yes, so that's part of that. We're working for the partnership for Real, those work experience placements. So that's what they're doing is they're placing those, those students from most of the coursework in those, those atmospheres. So we have placed 12.
RJ is in our.
RJ is actually one of the recipients of those 12, and he worked in here at Beetham Town Dallas at that park. So he could probably tell us what Ready for Real do and his opportunities, you know, opportunities there. And I'll put you in spot, RJ.
Yeah, so basically, you know, we'll go down there. So basically, my time for Ready for Real, we started with doing face shields for the hospital, that was at basically prime time of COVID. We learned a little bit about manufacturing classes, and that was, the goal was to incorporate job readiness and that whole CAD class. We don't remember the main class, it has changed over the past two years, but we did that. And then Ready for Real had a partnership with the district to get me employed in the ed tech office. And that district partnership went on for, I think, roughly six months. And it was about after that time when I got hired on full time by the district. And then Ready for Real has helped me through college, that's one of the agreements that they have, is that they will pay for their tuition, help them with housing. So it's, it's a really good program, the work readiness credential, I am a recipient of that. Coursework is definitely lengthy at times, but they go through in detail, I was very sure that it'd be successful. And, yeah, that was, that was lengthy.
Good job, RJ.
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
And I'd say RJ's been a huge asset for us on our campus. Every day we utilize him, and I call him all the time. I can't figure this out, he's there, he figures it out. So it's a wonderful lesson to kind of see that, that transition from the program that we have, so it's highly successful, we're building every day, helping our, helping our kids and helping our district. They're kind of a nice example of what that was like and what that program does for our kids.
So on the programs that are, that we started offering here, such as like welding and animal science, that is also offered at C V Tech, have we seen a shift toward Beetham Town?
So we have, we have lowered our numbers to C V Tech.
That's basically my question. So we're offering these, which I think is outstanding, because everybody that owns a house needs these skills. And these kids don't have these skills, as everybody knows in this room. So that's my question. I love that you're offering, but are the kids staying here to take the welding and the animal science, or are they still kind of?
I think it's.
I know it's a startup and it's going to take a little bit of time.
The big thing is the CTE, right? So that's, that's the piece that C V Tech can offer right now that we don't have. So I think that's the piece of the welding you get the CTE, you know, the certification, so we need to work towards, right? But you got to have, the piece you got to have is that an educator needs to be in the field for three years, right? So that's, that's kind of a barrier, but we have that mag, and that's the goal. But I think we have seen a reduction, actually, our, our C V Tech numbers quite substantially. We used to be, when I first got into media, it could be 40, 50.
Originally, it was 100, but we now 30.
So it's, it has gone down, now we're at, it's at 76. Or just based on course selection, we're a little less than that this year.
And sometimes a kid gets a taste of this and then they want to take deep dives at C V Tech, well, like with welding in particular, they have whole program or just welding?
No, I guess it's a work in progress, but we have seen, you know, a reduction there in keeping the kids here. Good question, thank you.
Couple of questions for you. So if I have a scenario, you know, contract has changed for much, different now. If, if someone wanted to, let's say if you want a carpentry, you know, and in today's world, I see the, some of them will use a CAD system to do the countertop, then, you know, do some, you know, business. So is there a collective effort to try to identify some of the students so that they get both CAD, the entrepreneurial class, and some of the other CTEs so that they have the collective information, so it's not just finance kids or technical finance, right? So, so they're going to leave here, they're, that's the barrier to go into those, into those businesses because it's not what it used to be, right? It's a little more complex now.
I think our counselors do a good job communicating those, what these are offering, right? So they meet with every student during the course selection period and have conversations around, here's what we offer for your electives, you know. And our partners, there's guys, some of those students want to take E T classes and, you know, so, you know, it has to make, you know, periods of day. But we, we do try to do that, but I don't know, open enrollment, it's a little tough too, right? Because you're letting those students, you know, you give the information and then let them kind of figure out if they want to go that way, how to. Our counselors do do a good job one-on-one, having those conversations, you know, just like you're having, right? You'd be more marketable if you take, you know, several of those courses throughout your career. And I think a lot of our students in that area for the electives, you see a lot of those students taking United States courses, they're taking tech courses, they're taking, that's where they're getting, you know, a lot of their credits from, their elective credits is through that, that piece. You know, they can do tech and give, you know, some math credits and things like that. So we do have those kids that, that do take multiple, you know, for the multiple.
Also, only, I know that like C V Tech, they have a very expensive welding program, two-year deep dive, but it doesn't cover some, some of the vegetable ones that tick. And the IAM does have micro credentials, the work and reading micro credentials for some of these more specific electronics tick. So is that a avenue that we're starting to look at? Because someone may not want to do the full load, for example, but they might want to have a little flavor of different things and they could do more.
Matt, that conversation started before Matt, that started actually with Justin Gardner, this person started here. And we actually brought the idea to, to, to Clint Community College, where we wanted our kids to be able to stack credentials and, and we wanted them to actually come outside so much so that we invested in that trailer, right? That rental trailer, which they still haven't been able to deliver yet. So we do want those credentials, so kids can stack those credentials and be super marketable. We, I think we're ready. I know we actually, that's one of the reasons why we bought the Snap-on Tools, right? Because they, I think they had turnover over there and probably, probably COVID has also hampered that. We, we, that's why we have credentials here. We value that idea of our kids going, working with them to stack credentials so that they can walk into an interview and be like, I've got precision measuring, I've got tag, I've got this, they got that, and they have a full package. That's what we love for kids that, that don't, they may have no desire to go to college, but the other piece of this is if they have no desire to go to college, but they did take courses where they got college credit down the line, they at least know that they have the ability to, to go to college. Because, you know, if you work for Norse, you might get an extra job, and they start looking, you know, searching for promotions, they're going to send you, usually pay for your college. And you, it's nice to have the confidence that you've had in completing college courses already.
And we did have the mobile CAD lab, we were actually working pretty extensively with Clint Community College on there. We're actually, we have to come over for a couple of days up here at, right in our heart, and our kids, one of our programs, through tech courses, they know how to be in the lab. And that was like, that was like the next year where COVID hit, right? So we had now, it kind of, like I said, a lot of change over there, you know, they haven't been, used actually their, you know, person prior. I've, I've been in contact with them quite a bit. So I'm looking at trying to refocus that, you know, now that COVID's done, we can kind of hopefully focus it on not so much the, the safety and all this, you know, safety's there, but not just like creating, you know, all the things we have to do around COVID to make things work, we can go back to those focuses of, okay, now let's get that partnership back with, and getting that, that mobile unit here and doing those types of things. I know our logos even on that, you know, we have our Beetham town logo on that, on the mobile lab, so that's a kind of a cool piece that will be, you know, important.
Do you have any other questions? All right. Thank you. One report's now.
Yes, try to keep it brief. First of all, we got so excited saying goodbye to so many great employees that we can say hello to our three new board members. So introducing to the public, we have Chris Gadway, whose dad has worked here for, what, 35, 40 years?
I think he started going in 1981 or 85.
81, yeah. Does a great job with our wrestling program, his father does. And over to my right, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
My name is Rick Sears. Native of this area, but I moved away in 1998 and I actually retired from a pretty large city school system out there, but I was a support staff, so that was pretty interesting. I was the parent person, then I was a facilities manager for 12 years after that. So I already retired with 22 years' experience. My daughter Carolyn is a teacher here at the, at the village school, and I have my grandson and my granddaughter, they're also attending here. And my other, my son, he also graduated from here in early 90s. So he went on to a very successful career with the college professors and remains still at the tech.
Welcome, welcome, Chris.
My name is John Fairchild. I'm in my 37th year as an educator in the North Country in, I think, eight different school districts at this point in time, as both a teacher, assistant principal, superintendent, and track of all trades, I guess. Happy to be here and join this group.
Thanks. Just to tag on to the presentation you saw, we finished up our college exploration ELO this past weekend, and we were able to go onto the Boston College campus. Boston College costs $75,000, $74,000 to go to Boston College without aid, and luckily they give a lot of aid for those students that choose to go there. But we did break into, we walked into one of their new buildings where they have all their STEM learning and their entrepreneurship learning. And as the kids walked by, they had, they had on the windows, it was all windows, on the windows, they had all the projects that they had completed, students at Boston College had completed for, for 3D printing. And our kids had walked by and like, they had like Pikachus and different things that the college kids had created, and our kids had walked by and they were talking about how they actually did some of that work at Carmel and Head with the 3D printer, with Manny Bishop, and of course with Mr. Spore, and then some of the courses that Matt just talked about. So it was really cool for them to be there and be feeling like that they were, they were doing that college-level work right here, early in their high school, early in their Beetham Town careers. So that was awesome to finish out that ELO. Kids got to be at a lot of college campuses and think about their future and what they want to do. So recently, we've had some pretty good contract talks, and I'm going to let Mr. Maron follow up on that, but I just want to point out that I do appreciate the conversational tone and the work that, that we are doing with the, with the BTA and some of the future plans that, that we are talking about. One of the things that I've talked about, I'm going to make one more, one more pitch for this. We've, those courses that you just saw, and this isn't by design, this is just, this just happens to dovetail nicely, those courses take a lot of work and a lot of initiative and a lot of purchasing, a lot of forethought, a lot of conversations with other entities, and every bit of it's been worth it. But as I mentioned, over the course of the pandemic, I feel as, as somebody who's been here for nine years, that we need to stop, or not, we need to slow down and almost stop and take a look at all the great initiatives that we have done, we have put in place at Beetham Town and make sure that there, there haven't, that there hasn't been holes created during the shutdown, during the pandemic. You know, obviously, we weren't able to take deep dives like, like we were when we created some of these initiatives. Professional development's been, been certainly difficult as it's not being offered in person. And what it is, it's hard because it's hard, it was hard to find subs before the pandemic, and it's more hard now. But some of the things that, if we, if we took a look at our goals over the last nine years and said, wouldn't it be worthwhile to just slow down and make sure we're doing all the little things right? When I take a look at our digital initiative and all the work that's been done, whether it's been RJ or Mr. Lambert or the whole staff that's taken part in that, it would be worthwhile to make sure we're still doing that well and doing the easy things well because when you start doing the easy things well, it makes everything else fall into place. I remember our school lunch program, I look at the school lunch program and I know our numbers are down there, so why wouldn't we slow down and make sure that our school lunch program, our numbers go back up to, to pre-pandemic, make, maybe make post-pandemic? As food becomes more expensive, why wouldn't more kids eat here? I know we don't advertise to go to the cafeteria like we used to, and we probably need that signage back up, we need a lot of, we need to go back and redo a couple of things and make it more, more meaningful. The MTS S program, which we had a board presentation on, is super valuable work, and it involves the total child, everything from their mental wellness all the way through to their, their ability to, to read and write and compute and do math and, and take a look at, you know, our AI, so AIS academic services are built into our MTS S program. How are we doing it? How can we keep kids out of being identified as needing tier, higher tier supports? So what do we need to do at tier one teaching levels that maybe we used to do and we don't do anymore? There may be things that we're not doing at the third grade level, like, like memorizing math facts and so many other things. Taking time to, to take a look at that would serve our students well, I think serve our initiatives well. So there's a bunch more, even our committee works, our committee work over the, over the pandemic has been really, really hard to get people to show up and go for obvious reasons. But if we're going to have board committees and we're going to have shared service, or shared decision-making, we need to find ways to make sure that, that we show up and we attend and we contribute to those committees and put a premium on, on that. And I could go through and through, but professional development is certainly, we have a professional development meeting on Thursday, and it's so hard to, to do the so important work with professional development. That digital initiative would have failed flat on its face had we not had all that professional development that we gave our teachers. And right now, finding ways to, to give professional development is exceptionally challenging, number one, because you have to, if you can find the person to present, you have to find the people that can find the time, and then if you do it during a school day, you also have to find, find a substitute. Those are just some of the reasons why. So again, taking some time, I know we've been rigorous on our goals and it's helped move this district forward so much, but I would say once again, I would find value and I think this district would find value and stay on top if we make sure that our foundation is strong and that we have everything in place. And even if, and we may go through this all and be like, oh, we're ready to roll, and that would just be reaffirming, I think. But I bet you we'd find things that we need to, to do. Lastly, hiring is so important, we spent so much time over the last, you were interviewing today, right, Jen? Right? I think I had interviews today, I did this morning. Hiring and then the retention. Right now, it's almost like free agency out there, that we're in a new world for retention, and what are we going to do to retain our staff? But then I'll, lastly, I'll just talk about the behavior issues we're seeing across the board, from, from everybody, regardless of age. How are we going to take what we formally had for discipline and what we currently have for discipline, um, or interventions for kids, it doesn't always have to be discipline, um, and make it so that, so that teachers can teach and kids can learn and we can get those kids that are blowing up, that we talked about, what they need? So I just, uh, implore the, the board to take a hard look at hitting the pause button and, and taking our goals, because this is what we would do for any of these initiatives. If, if we have to hit stop sometimes and take a look underneath the hood, um, that's always the right move. And I would say we might need to hit stop, look under the hood, make sure we're doing the easy things well, because they build, everything else builds off, off from that. Um, so I wanted to bring that up again. I know sometimes, um, sometimes that's, uh, that's a struggle, um, but I think it would be, it'd be worthwhile. And that's, that's my, Ed, that's my request, that's my report for, um, today.
Jen?
Business office is exceptionally busy this time of year. Our books will be closed by June thirty, our book starts, our books on June thirty. Um, just letting you guys be aware, our audit, our external audit starts July twenty-fifth, so it'll be that week. They're normally here three, four days, um, so we'll be working on that diligently with fewer hands right now, so it is significantly more work this year for the few of us that are going to be here. Um, so that's what our main priority is right now at the business office. Um, there's not a whole lot else going on, because there's not much left. We'll be closing out grants, um, trying to get all of this money in order and spent, tidied up. Uh, that's about it for, for the business office.
I just got the letter from CBS about our payment problem.
The payment. Yes, so that's, that's what we'll be doing for the next four weeks. Doing a lot of journal entries, closing out books, a lot of bills, a lot, a lot of work going on.
Thank you.
Jen, do you want to hit quickly on the side letter that's kind of unique, that's in, that, I think it's in the agenda?
So the side letter for our non-instructional group, um, is raising the minimum rate of pay to fifteen dollars an hour to those that are not there yet. So everybody that's at the minimum wage, which is thirteen twenty right now, will be raised up to fifteen dollars per hour. Again, because of retention and hiring, we, we are struggling, just like everybody else is struggling, um, and we're hoping that this will help. Um, it will, we figured it out between, um, our group and, and the non-instructional group, Nina and Bobby King, that it's probably going to hit about seventy percent of their, their unit is going to get bumped up to fifteen dollars. So, um, it does affect a lot of their unit, which is good, that's a very good thing. Um, and we're hoping it helps retain, and then we're hoping it helps find, we've got a lot of openings. Um, Polly can, we're probably, what, at least five, six, eight down, at least. Um, we're four full-time custodians down, cafeteria monitors, I think we're down, um, yeah, there, there's a typist, we're, that's what we're down, a typist between Polly and I. Um, so there's a lot, a lot of holes that need to be filled, and we're hoping this is going to, going to help that. And the union was very, very great with working with us and getting this all figured out, and very, very happy that we're, we're trying something to see if we can get some, some people in.
So I take it everybody that was on that list was all nominated?
On what?
Or, wasn't that, uh?
The positions.
The positions?
Oh, yes.
They were all?
Not, not all, depending on how many years you have.
I did notice that.
Yeah.
And the number of months.
Yeah, yeah, but, um, the majority of our start, all of our starting salaries are below fifteen dollars. Yes, one hundred percent, um, except for maybe two, I think mechanic might have been over and, I don't know. But, um, yeah, so whatever's most beneficial to the employee, so it's either going to be a three point to five percent increase or the fifteen dollars, whatever's most beneficial to the employee.
All right. Mr. Allen?
Sorry, I'm with the high school today, was the last day of finals. And I'm just beginning to handle the colleges, um, that went through, uh, twenty-third. So if you don't know, school is, is done for the high school, and, uh, with the exception of four schools, I have to walk through three of these exams. Uh, there was spring fling dance, that's kind of a new thing, um, that was put on May thirteenth. That was done by the senior class, but there was a lot of, so that was, that was a good, interesting new dance in the spring. There was senior prom, there was junior prom and senior prom. Senior prom was at Spirit Heath and Allen, that happened a couple of weekends ago, and junior prom was before that at the Rainbow Room. There was also, uh, the top ten percent dinner ceremony, recognizing the top ten percent of the graduating class. That was junior first. If you don't know about that, that's usually what the county, the county usually puts that on, but they haven't put it on, they've opted not, so the school picked up the slack and it was, uh, pretty, it was very good. I was glad to see that. Uh, the National Honor Society induction happened, that was only June fifth last week. And there was, today, the senior walked through the elementary, the middle school and the high school, both elementarys, where all of seniors were, uh, capping gown and walking through the halls as the kids were out, out in halls. So they all got to see us, all the graduates. So we're gearing up for the Varsity Club Athletic Awards Night, that's Thursday. CV Tech U-Vision's graduation on the twenty-first, Scholarship to Organize on the twenty-second, and the parent-sponsored senior parade is on June twenty-third. Commencing with graduation on the twenty-fourth at six-thirty on the turf. We also have rehearsal before that on the same day. Mr. Saya, I would like to thank all the people that have contributed to the above events, ensuring a wonderful experience, and Mr. Saya would also like to thank Brad and Ron for his senior graduation to campus. Thank you.
Very nice.
Cumberland Head, today was the official Flag Day celebration at Cumberland Head. I noticed that when I walked through, all the kids were waiting in flag dust, but it was fantastic. Music teacher, this is yet in, physically teaching all students patriotic songs for this occasion, and all students gathering outside, performing their songs to take part in the school-wide singing law. Everyone was asked to wear patriotic colors, and those people, the first time the entire school was gathered as a student body since the beginning of the year. June thirteenth was the school-wide Eagle Pride Celebration Day, committee of teacher volunteers and TBL have worked hard to create a special day. Students will be rotating stations and enjoying various activities such as rock painting, uh, magician act, ice cream truck, sidewalk chalk, and outside yard games. So that was suggested. Several ELO opportunities are continuing until the end of the school year. There's around the world, where students learn about different cultures and taste food from all around the world, president buddies, where students make french fries lists, Lake Plaza trip for hiking, the Circus Murkisburg clown camp, and Superintendent Mannix has encouraged all providers to incorporate children's literature into the offerings. The Circus Murkis group is also led by Ms. Collin, Mr. Garcia, and Ms. Deller. Had something, um, special with her, their book that they are using. The Circus of the NFC reached out, because her husband learned of the group's use of the book. The author, Lori Snyder, is now setting personalized book places for each participant to put in their votes. We look forward to celebrating the graduates, and the teachers are busy preparing pre-take kindergarten in fifth grade for their graduation, their respective graduation ceremonies. The middle school and the high school counselors hosted the eighth-grade curriculum night. High school curriculum family night was on May twenty-fifth, and it provided eighth-grade students and families the opportunity to learn about high school offerings, youth pathways, and state graduation requirements. Students and families were also able to engage with members of the high school staff. It's pretty important, I remember that night. Principal Nelson and Associate Principal Manchester organized, facilitated, facilitated a sixth-grade family game night on May eleventh. Students and families enjoyed playing board games, eating Italian meal with fellow classmates, with fellow classmates and parents. Forty-six students were included, were inducted into the National Junior Honor Society, and of course, thank you, this is like the work you put on such a wonderful ceremony for those students and parents. As with every school year, the month of June, missed field for the exams, including the middle school. There's over ninety-five eighth graders taking the algebra one regions and forty-nine taking the living and writing regions. One hundred and eighteen are currently taking the foreign language proficiency exam, it's a local exam, and BMS teachers have been graduating with new sections after school, and are beginning to support them through this experience. And next week, students will be recognized for their achievements, both academically and behaviorally, at the grade-level awards ceremonies that will be held on the twenty-first. Fifth graders from Cumberland Head and the D-Maine Building Elementary will be coming to BMS for orientation. On the twenty-third, BMS will celebrate eighth-grade students during the moving-up ceremony, and later that evening, with a special eighth-grade dance. Guys, students are eager to have the opportunity and smooth transition to the high school for the fall. On the twenty-second, all grade levels will enjoy an end-of-year trip. Sixth graders are going through sportive caves, seventh graders are headed to one rush, uh, and bowling. And the eighth graders are going to test their skills on the rope course at Adrona and Extreme Road Course. The following day, the eighth-grade moving-up ceremony will take place in the high school museum at nine AM. The ceremony will be attended by all middle school students and guests. The week comes to a close on the twenty-fourth with the Pride Day, where students will be able to choose and drive new activities. D-Maine Building Elementary, of course, busy with files. Grade four students participated in the science, state of science exam, pre-k screening, reading and math benchmarking has also been completed, it's showing they're all ramped up. ELOs continue, sports media groups have variety of activities, others include running club, drawing, literature and drawing, gardening, indoor and outdoor games, writing, field game, diamond finger, and others. There was a field day ELO recently with over one hundred kids, attendance. Last weekend, we went to see the Mary Poppins play, run by the Adrona National Theater. Smirkling Camp is this weekend, Vermont. Last weekend, excuse me, last week, students in grades three through five participated in a talent show. Due to COVID, the elementary school hasn't done this in a couple of years, but it was like, it was a skipped beat. There were over fifty students performed on stage with their classmates and families. Of course, a great job was done by all, with comedy shows, singing, dancing, and magic shows. Over the course of the past one or so, students in all classrooms decorated culinary bags, literally made of light. This work from the elementary school to this cause was heartwarming. As we prepare for the close of the school year, looking forward to the school-wide day, fun day, and in-person Eagle Pride Assembly, moving-up day, kindergarten graduation, and the fifth-grade moving-up ceremony. That's all I have.
Very nice. How was JP's trip?
I didn't go.
Did he go?
I didn't calculate his cards to him.
I don't, my son was eager to go to that, but his surgery and...
Oh, he couldn't go, yeah?
He couldn't, well, he had surgery.
Yeah.
I probably should have went, because I'm, I'm completely really bad at cards. I lost every game.
Yeah, glad you guys are having fun. That's great.
For those of you guys that don't know, Riley's going to be going to Clarkson University next year, ROTC scholarship.
Four years.
Four years. Congratulations, Riley.
I won't fault you for any of those two choices. All right, uh, Crystal?
Hall of Fame, very excited to report that the, um, the drawing is done and there was some local winners and, you know, some houses of other communities, so that fundraiser is now closed. The Hall of Fame committee did meet yesterday and, um, scheduled on the second class. Uh, that committee, um, was also comprised of members from the inaugural class, so they were involved in the W the next round, and, um, the candidates that were selected will be reported in the very near future, but very excited to hear who that second class will be, and as always, continuing to encourage everybody to nominate somebody from the Beattmentown family to the Hall of Fame.
Goes up, all right. All right, so negotiations. Um, let's see here. I guess really, a lot of great work was done recently by, uh, Mr. Tarr and his, and his team and Mr. Maddox, Ms. Palmer, I mean, Ms. Parliament, um, coming to kind of an agreement in good faith, it was really, really good, from what you said.
Our internal teams?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it now goes to the broader groups, right?
So, journey, it came to a great place. Uh, today, we met with our attorney and the negotiating team and went over the details of it. Um, really good, I think it's a good, good place. Definitely raises that the, the staff deserves, um, and we could go into that in more detail in executive session, but I think it's a, it's a good place for everybody. So we're glad to have that going forward. All right, consent agenda?
Before we go, I just want to say one thing, I wish you was here today. Renee Hall and her team, as if they looked at this year's book. It is outstanding. It usually takes five minutes. I looked at this book for forty-five minutes. It is outstanding. So anybody that wants to look at this book, it's an enjoyable one. You don't have to read much, it is enjoyable.
Did it make you want to go back to high school?
I'll tell you before we started, it is, it is the best yearbook I've ever seen.
Nice.
It's awesome.
Is there, are there a lot of pictures of you in there?
There is none. But when you look through these sports and everybody has their own picture, and it is amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
It's amazing.
It's a lot of work, too, I know.
Take a look at it, you'll like it.
All right, uh, let's see here. Resolved, Superintendent Schools recommends to Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Is that where I'm at? Yes. I need a motion.
I'll motion, Crystal.
Crystal, second. Cheryl, any questions on minutes? All in favor? Aye. All right, motion passes. Resolved, Superintendent Schools recommends to Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and five oh four recommendations dated six fourteen twenty-two. Motion, please?
I'll motion, Patty.
Patty?
I'll second.
Second, Nicole. Any questions, discussions on this? All in favor? Aye. All right, make sure you tell me yes or no, everybody. All right, personnel. Um, before I go to the resolution, I was going to
Yes.
introduce the new board members, but somebody kind of hijacked.
Sorry about that.
Um, but I do want to give you guys, uh, an opportunity to, I know you talked a little bit about, a little bit about yourself and why you became, or came onto the board, and you talked a little bit about, anything else you want to add?
No.
Good.
I graduated second.
And I just learned that, uh, John's family's been here for a few hundred years or something in this area.
Yes.
Something crazy. Unbelievable. Chris?
Yeah, I didn't realize we were supposed to enter this itself.
Sorry.
No, 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 I'm supposed to give you a chance to do that.
I, uh, I lived here, grew up here my whole life, went to school here, graduated in two thousand one, so twenty-one years ago. I got some daughters here, sixth and eighth graders. Started in that click direction, been there thirty-two years. So if we fail, it's my God's cherries, which we don't want to do. It's pretty much it. My father's dedicated his life to this school and the sport of wrestling. Which, for those who don't know, he's going to be inducted into the National Wrestling Club next year, so.
Wow. No, no, he has, no, he, he has been nominated, but he, he's got to retire, so.
Excellent. Welcome aboard. All right, welcome aboard.
Wait, we have one other, you said, you want to do that, you want me to do that?
No, you can do it when, when we get there.
Go ahead.
Let me run this first.
Yeah, okay.
And then you can do it. All right, yeah, so welcome aboard, the water's fine, don't worry. Resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, and tenure be and are hereby approved. Need a motion, please? Cheryl, second?
Second, please.
All right.
I have to use it up.
Okay, now, now, if there are any questions and discussions.
Oh, no, so I was just, uh, you know, um, I've been such a jovial media, I don't want to turn things in a negative slant, but, um, with what's happened lately, I noticed that two safety officers are on the resignation list, and I'm just curious if, um, does that impact our numbers? Are there replacements for them?
That's the thing to ask.
It's a perfect time to ask. No, so one? No, so one, well, one is being, being recalled to the sheriff's department, so we'll have to replace him. But one is leaving, was leaving a current position to fill a new position in the district. So he's leaving hall monitor to, he's moving to the SS, SR, not SR, SSO. Did I say that right?
Yes.
A lot of acronyms. So he's moving from hall monitor Robbie Karen to, who's doing a fantastic job, to the school's safety position. Yeah, so we still have, we still have three right now, filling that position, filling the position. We, you will see an agenda item in, over the summer, changing the title from SSO to guard, security guard, but the, the job will remain the same.
Any other questions on this? So just as a reminder, and I'm glad you asked the question, is all of this information is on the board, on the web, for you guys to look at and go through in detail. If you have questions, perfect time to email, email the whole board and superintendent at the same time for your questions, because if you're thinking about it, somebody else might be thinking about it. The consent agenda is consent agenda just for time, since we have people here, but the idea is to do our homework ahead of time, get all this, all this in our heads, maybe do some conversations before that so that... But if there are questions that come up in the last minute, this is the time to ask.
And a lot of times, anybody who asks a question, we still say, hey, we'll give you the answer now, but we'll just ask it.
Right.
At, at the board meeting, so that...
Right, and so that's why, you know, I have to ask discussions, anything like that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Now, Mr. Mannix.
Yeah, so welcoming or re-welcoming somebody back into the Beaton Town family, although it seems like she's never left. I remember her as a young hockey player, then as a senior hockey player, then as a student at Placerville State doing her practicum, and now she's been appointed as a teacher here at Beaton Town. Abigail Baum will be joining us. Congratulations, and I feel old saying all that, but congratulations.
All right. Excellent. Welcome aboard. Lots of appointments. Family appointments. Family personnel. Tenure. All right, miscellaneous. Did I miss anything? You guys are supposed to catch me if I miss something. All right. Resolved that the Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, school bus use for the North Country Honor Flight Contract, Champlain Valley Family Center, Special Education School Date Summer School CEWW BOSI's, amended athletic merger, per diem nurse agreement, sign letter of understanding Beaton Town support staff, pay rate increase and school bus lease agreement, be and are hereby approved. Motion, please. Cheryl? Second?
I'll second, Nicole.
Nicole. Any discussion or questions on this one?
I'll, I'll just make a comment about the North Country Honor Flight. I think we're one of two schools that continues to promote buses for that very noble event in Thank God Rivers, and we just had Memorial Day. And I was like to point out that our wonderful hometown hero was up, so I'd love to see that our community continues to support it.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. For public information, so, so these, this agenda, of course, is slightly different than the one that was published on, on Friday, but we have the changes included in it already. So those are all online if anybody has any questions. Financial. Resolved that the Superintendent Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, transfers, internal audit report, insurance reserve fund, and bid, trash removal, be and are hereby approved. Motion, please. Okay, Crystal? Second?
I'll second, Patty.
Patty? All right. Okay. Any discussion on this consent agenda financial? All right, nobody? Do you have a question? We will, but first I'm asking for discussion.
I was just gonna ask the internal audit report part of this right now.
Yes.
The, I read through it, but is there anything of, like, particular note that you guys feel like has to be acted on right away? I mean, it's more of a, like, these are two things to look at and mind, yeah, but is there anything?
No, nothing, nothing alarming. Come over purchasing, purchasing process, which actually did very well, gave us a few minor suggestions. And then we looked over in Gary's department, key swipes and the use of key swipes and how we were handling that and when they were being deactivated in social security.
Yeah, there, there was a good conversation with security there. We currently give all sheriff's department and instant troopers access, but they don't have identification to, of who comes in. So we want to re-engage with them and just make it a little, not harder for them, but just have an awareness of when somebody enters our building, who it is that enters the building. But that, it was a good conversation about how do we delete these and how do we, you know, make sure that they're not just going, they're not fumbling around the community, I guess. So it was, it was a good conversation, and there's still work to do.
All right, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gadway?
Yes.
Patty LaPlante?
Yes.
Cheryl McKenzie?
Yes.
Ed Marin?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupour?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Additional items to discuss, right? No? Yeah.
Bond resolution.
Oh, the bond resolution.
I thought it was included.
It's not a part, it's not a part of the consent agenda, I'm not...
Because it's a silent roll call.
Yeah, I thought it was still, but it's not.
It doesn't, no.
Okay, yeah, it should be separate. It's not a consent agenda, okay. All right, anybody who's welcome to move this forward. Bond, bond resolution, the Beaton Town Central School District adopted June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, authorizing the issuance and sale of the serial bonds or notes.
I motion in the last group.
Thank you. Hold on, so Cheryl, have you done? Crystal? Motion, second?
Second.
Doug? Any questions on this bond? Jen, do you want to go into any, anything on this?
It's just the purchasing, the, the vote that went through and was approved. This is giving us, if we were to bond it, this is giving us the approval to that. We're, it's in our budget, so we are not bonding.
Okay. Good, thank you. Roll call, please.
Douglas Beebe?
Yes.
John Fairchild?
Yes.
Christopher Gadway?
Yes.
Patty LaPlante?
Yes.
Cheryl McKenzie?
Yes.
Ed Marin?
Yes.
Crystal Palmer?
Yes.
Nicole Pupour?
Yes.
Richard Sears?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Additional items to discuss. Before I go any further, I want to just add a note because we have people leave, new people. There's a section on the, on the portal for you to look at committees, right, and there's a spreadsheet, and so I updated the spreadsheet and added, John, you're in policy and Hall of Fame committees. Chris, you're in operations and Hall of Fame committees. And let's see here, you're at, you're on operations and health and safety. And as we go forward in the next month, there's going to be, you know, a lot of changes and, you know, we can update and change things and, and schedules don't work out for you, we'll make it work. Okay? All right. Second thing I want to talk about, oh, I attended the graduation ceremony at Placerville State, a special, really special graduation. We don't often have, have students that participate in that, as next year, if we do have any, anybody wants to attend, that's a really inspiring graduation to go to for special ed. Do you guys want, any comments on that or mention anything? You guys were great, by the way, on the stage with your students.
I will say one thing that's, that's sometimes preferred to CD, is that we're always trying to bring our students, you know, back, back in the house. Sometimes when my students frequently transfer from one region to another, either for disparaged reasons, we often make the best determination to keep the child at CDS only, because then they won't be in disruption to their, to their school setting. So that does play a top, although we always try to bring our students back in, but sometimes we will have students graduate, especially if they transfer, you know, be here late, late in high school, later. But that is a point where we don't have many graduates.
Right.
We can bring them back sometimes, just to, it's not in the child, it's the person who's doing that consideration.
Thank you. Great work there. Let's see here, next, yeah.
I just have one question. And this is because I'm not a numbers person.
I am.
Can, can you help me understand why the Sun community members required our tax levy was a six point three percent increase? Because that's a new number to me. That's incorrect.
Yeah, that's incorrect. So they're using our, so our budget increased by six percent, or six point, probably whatever percent, but that's because we had that influx of state aid money? But that's not our tax increase at all, that's, that, you know, when...
It's an overall budget increase.
It's our overall budget increase, so we, we stay within the tax cap, which was two point seven four.
Yep.
Thank you. That's it, but I have some community members.
Yeah.
Have we reached out to them yet to address this?
I read the, they were, they were, they were not discriminatory, they did that for everybody, so. They, they, so I did not have them correct everybody, so it is what it is.
All right.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so, back on additional items. July reorganization meeting date, so we haven't, we haven't picked one yet.
Right. So we have to, my understanding is you have to have the reorg meeting before, I think it's the fifth, the fifteenth. So the only other concern is July fourth, families are usually doing something, so we, you know, vacations, you look at the weekends and stuff like that. But sometimes people have it right on the first, sometimes people have it on the fifteenth, we've got to have a meeting, one of those dates. And those meetings are not really like, it's just a lot of business, it's not like this meeting with presentations and...
Right.
Right.
So I can't remember when we've usually held it. I think it's like the twelfth or something, nineteenth.
The board usually just finds a hole that works for the majority, right?
Right.
I think last year you did prioritize the April.
Maybe fifteenth, fourteenth, yeah.
Well, it'd be nice to keep it on a Tuesday because it's consistent, right? So we have, for July, we have the fifth, the twelfth, and nineteenth, and twenty-sixth.
Fifth or twelfth or any day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For that, or any day in the first two weeks.
Right, okay. Anybody open for the twelfth? Or the fifth?
I don't know if you, I don't know how, okay, so July fourth, if people are going to waste a place?
Well, that's a question, I mean, it's also since these people are here. Does anybody have, do you guys have a preference between fifth and twelve?
Twelve.
Right, well, go ahead, you guys. Twelve? Either or, Nicole? Twelve. No, you're not.
Twelve.
Doug? Looks like the twelfth.
Sold.
Sold, all right. Seven, twelve. All right.
Did I see an email for the conference safety committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Half day for BTA on the last day of school.
Yeah, so this isn't, so in the contract, they, the element is basically, as we talked about before, high school will have recent exams and graduation on basically the last day of school. In the contract for pre-k through grade eight, the day before the last day of school is a half day. Most years, well, sorry, we, for a long period of time, there was, that week was always half days, and then the regulations changed. And so no, so one of those, that second to last day is a half day, but the board has regularly, we went through today and looked at board agenda items, has regularly given other half, a half day, another half day or days, as long as we were in compliance with that nine hundred and ninety-hour regulation. So I don't know that it's happened every year, but, but a lot of years, there's been an additional half day or so added. And we're asking again, we have the time, we meet the regulation, that last day is, I would, I would say that's a lot of fun. We learn how to have fun and say goodbye, but there's not a ton of formalized learning happening that's appropriate. So I'd like to do it as a way to, to say thank you, not only for the hard work everybody's done this year and other years, and also in recognition of, you know, there, there were half days that veteran teachers were used to that have been kind of taken away because of that new regulation. Okay?
All right.
So there's no formal resolution needed, we would just, we would change the calendar and make the public aware.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, like tomorrow, like tomorrow, right? I guess, is anybody opposed, is there, is there opposition to?
I don't think it was their idea, really, I feel right.
Well, it's, it's also standardization with, I think, you say, the most, most of the, most of the region. And, and we used to do that here, too.
We used to.
Yeah, like, well, the, the schools that start at eight and go to three, their calculus is, is different, so they are able to have more half days at the end, and we, something we used to do here. And while some parents might not love that because of they have to find that daycare, I'm quite certain that none of the kids are going to complain, and none of the teachers are probably going to complain. Or principals or custodians, right?
Right. Two last things I want to add here, additional comments. The board is also welcome to the CDTech graduation or CDS graduation. We'll send out some information on that, you know, we have students to participate, like, I talked about it. And also, I participated at, Clarkson University has the annual technology conference. And the reason I bring it up is because Tony is retiring as the president to the college, and so we talked about education as a whole, not just the university, right? And one of the things that's apparent to them, that they're having to adjust to, which you kind of pointed out originally, we talked a little bit with the credentialist, they're adding badges to the university program. So not only are you getting your PS or MS degree, but you're also tagging on different badges that different institutions may want you to have. So the, the conversation that we had earlier about micro credentials or badges is not just in a small sector, that's happening across the board. It also was helped out quite a bit by the COVID, COVID situation, right? Online learning and expanding that, so a lot of, a lot of changes, I mean, just, we always know that education's changing, it's even more so not staying stagnant, it's changing at all levels. So something to think about as we go forward. And the last thing is, we didn't have a public comment.
Yeah.
If anybody in the public wants to make some comments, yes, no, having seen nobody there, we'll go to executive session, so resolveth the Board of Education, appoint.
Oh, Scott.
Oh, Scott, did you want to talk?
I thought there were two, two times to address.
So it was inadvertent.
It was, but it was inadvertently somehow, I don't know.
I would like to address.
Yeah, 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 that's okay, last week we had board members from last year on here, you know, and I didn't catch it. I'm not blaming, I'm not blaming anyone.
So I'm flying high as I, as I make this presentation to you. Good evening, thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Scott Cutair. I'm a LA teacher in the middle school, and I'm finishing up my twenty-sixth year of teaching here at Beaton Town. On June first, I became the new president of the Beaton Town Teachers Association. First, I'd like to thank you for your service to our school community. Work you do is vital and appreciated. The work you do is vital and appreciated. I come here to speak tonight respectfully and as a representative of the BTA to give you some input regarding the current state of education at Beadmentown from a teacher's perspective. I love Beadmentown. I spent more than half my life here. I've always been impressed by how hard people work and how much they care about children. To make education work, the stakeholders need to be committed, industrious, satisfied, and appreciative. Nearly everyone who works here, from the office staff, to the bus drivers, to the cafeteria workers, to the custodians, to the administration, and the teachers, go above and beyond what they were hired to do. In the last decade, Beadmentown has built a reputation of being the most progressive school in the area. We did so with vision, collaboration, and hard work. And then the pandemic happened. We all know that the pandemic has taken its toll throughout the world, and it's definitely taken its toll on education. Like many schools across the country, we are facing challenges at Beadmentown that are beyond what was once considered typical. People are exhausted and feeling overwhelmed. Now is not the time to push. It's a time to return to simple. We need to do simple well. In order to teach our children to be quality contributors, contributors to society itself, we need to set realistic goals and have a vision that addresses our current pandemic impacted situation. Student attendance is a big problem right now. Missing 20 days of school a year used to be the standard of unacceptance. High school students would be in danger of being no credited for classes if they missed 20 days of school. To give you some perspective, just to provide you a microcosm of what attendance is like right now at Beadmentown, I'd like to share the attendance data from just my students in sixth grade. 60% of my students have missed at least 20%, I'm sorry, please, please start again. 60% of my students have missed at least 20 days of school this year. 30% of my students have missed at least 30 days of school this year. 17% of my students have missed at least 40 days of school this year. And I have four students who've missed over 50 days of school this year. I do understand that some of these absences can be connected to COVID, but the reality is that we need to develop a plan to address attendance. We cannot help students become better readers, writers, thinkers, contributors if they don't come to school. And although we have a ton of wonderful, kind, respectful students at Beadmentown, unfortunately, like schools across the North Country and across the entire country, the percentage of students who aren't following school rules and who aren't displaying acceptable levels of behavior is well above pre-pandemic levels. Mr. Mann has talked about it earlier. Yes, students are struggling with mental health, and we understand and we appreciate that the district is making positive strides to address mental health. But student behavior is at a level that is impacting the ability to educate. And even though the percentage of students misbehaving is still a minority in comparison to the entire student body, there has been an increase in unacceptable, extreme, and harmful behavior. Extreme behavior often dominates and drains our administrative and counseling resources. That often leads to students not having services and teachers not having supports that used to be typical. I don't say this to be accusatory or negative at all. Everyone is trying their best and we recognize that. But the reality is that atypical behavior among students increases stress, tension, and frustration for all involved. Having associate principals in every building and hiring more professionals who are able to address mental health is necessary to help us get back on track. Additionally, the academic achievement gap has widened. Students handled the pandemic in a variety of ways. Some students hung in there very well, respectfully so. Some students did little, and there is a huge range, a wide range in between. But the reality is that within the classroom, the gap has widened between our highest achieving students and those who struggle. Basic skills have suffered. This makes teaching challenging. We work hard every day to do all we can to reach every student. It's the foundation of our profession. But differentiation can be overwhelming, and we do our best to make it happen. The reality is, though, the bigger the class and the bigger the achievement gap within the classroom, the harder it is to reach every child. I'm not here to complain or point fingers at all. But I am here to make you aware that in order to grow, we need to do simple well. We need to set goals to improve attendance, improve student behavior, improve basic skills, and address the current state of education at Beadmentown. The BTA would like to be a valuable resource and work closely with the district as we address the current challenges in education. I've already had several positive, productive meetings with Dan and appreciate his willingness to listen. I look forward to working with him and I look forward to working with you in my new role. Thank you for your time and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Good. Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
John, you're an educator. And obviously not here.
That's the story everywhere right now.
Okay.
People are just asking for a deep breath and was hold over the arm for, we're actually having a committee in my district to look for those same things across the board.
And I want to, I know I kind of said fairly similar things before. And I say those because I was on that, that journey, like how can we help morale, how can we help this situation out? And I went to, I actually drove to places for PD or I was on a few webinars for PD. And there was a lot of talk about, well, we don't really know, partner with your, you know, with your unions because you can't do it alone. But also taking a deep breath and slowing down is what a lot of districts have done. Just to, just, I don't, do you want to recalibrate? Why, why would you say that, John?
It's just, the biggest challenge as a teacher is we're constantly having one, two, or three kids out of the class around for five days at a time. And I think we're just chasing our tail trying to catch those kids up. And it's very difficult. And I'm lucky, I've got eight to 10 kids in most of my classes. I can't imagine moving to 24 or 25. We're just, teachers are being pushed right to the max right now at this point. They need to really take a summer off and relax a little bit.
Yeah. Thanks. I wanted to get your feedback, too.
So for the board, you know, we, we will be doing board goals and district goals. And I think that, um, that's a good time for us to maybe work with Scott and your team and really collectively look at, you guys are the ones that have the most experience, right? And, and we need the guidance from your, from your background on how best to give the students what they need. That's, that's not us. That's you guys. I mean, with the exception of John and Dan. And a few days that I've, I've had in class. But, uh, I think, I think that would be great. As parliamentally speaking, when we do, uh, public comment, you know, the, the board meeting is for the board, it happens to be in public, right? And so when, when people come into the board, it's not supposed to be an engaged discussion. Obviously, you know, this is a different situation because they're a part of the organization. So we, we sometimes encourage that conversation, but anybody out the street, we wouldn't, we just don't, right? I will, I will say, I'll give you an analogy and, and hopefully it'll tell you that I understand what you're saying. Because when I was flying in the Air Force, we had something called currency. And what that means is that if I'm doing a maneuver or to air something or to ground something, just taking off and landing, for every single thing that you're capable of doing on your list for your, your type of job profile and mission, we have what's called currency. And that means that, that if Riley has learned to drop this type of a weapon, that he has to be able to do that again within a certain period of time to make sure that, that we feel that that's the minimum amount of time that he's current and capable of doing that at any point in time. And that could be something as simple as a loop. And if you miss that currency, you have to go back, and it could be something as simple as taking off and landing. You have to go back up within a structure and they have to come back and sign off on you as being current again. And that could happen for many reasons. Being sick, someone in your family dies, you have to go away, et cetera. So my analogy is that I, with the COVID and everything else, I can imagine students are suffering from, as you as educators, you keep them up to certain points, and if they disappear on you and they come back, there's, there's a certain education loss that you've got to catch up with, right? So if I'm listening to you correctly, there's a little bit of a need of kind of going back to basics, centering, and getting our foundation established so that we, so we can grow back up. Because if we start going back that path and you lose, and we already lose kids as it is because things go, go too far ahead, too fast for them, and then they're, they're too far behind, right? If that makes any sense. I hope that analogy was collective. Does anybody have any comments or questions to Scott and his team based on his presentation?
20 days, then when did we get away with it?
So, so the 20 days, we did analysis of dropout rates at Beadmentown. And we, we, my first year, Eric Anderson was a board member. He was great, great with data. And we realized that 22 or 23 days was the marking point where kids would drop. They, at 22 days, they went from having like a 3% dropout rate to a, you know, 50% dropout rate, or it was just such a significant marker. Um, and we've stayed strong on not letting kids not be here. Like, like, I remember Greg Myers said one time, he said, maybe it was year three, he said, hey, every senior that started the year is graduating 100%. I said, that's phenomenal. He goes, what do you think I do? And our graduation rate has gone from 78% to 93% right now. Last year was 93%. Where we got away from that is, is COVID. So if you're sick, stay home, right? And, and it's not home for two days, right? And there, there's kids, I know, I haven't got the phone call yet, but I know it's coming. There's kids who are home right now who aren't sick, right? And so, and this is like their third time. And I know there's people in the audience who've had kids that have been quarantined, and luckily we're not doing that anymore. So this girl's home because, sorry, this student's home because of COVID. There's a positive test. But we did, we didn't quarantine anybody, but the health department quarantined people. So, but then, now you also have that situation where you guys, the principals, have kids who come down to the office and say, I'm sick. And you, you can't be like, I mean, it's hard. So now we, sometimes you give them a COVID test if you, if, if their parents allow them to take a COVID test. But there's ways, a lot, it's a lot easier to squirm out of school now because of the need to, to be home. And then on top of that, and I've said this here before, I said this to the commissioner. I said, I said, you know, we're so worried, you're so worried about, um, about all these COVID rules. And at Beadmentown, we've had no kids in the ICU, right? But we have sent, and I don't know why I put Polly on the spot right now, but I knew at one point in time, we had, had 24, and the number's larger than that. The number's larger than that now. 24 kids admitted into the psychiatric ward at CVPH, which is way above any number we've ever seen before. So when they're in there, they're not here. And that's more tend, so it's, those, mental health issues are impacting kids. And the, the fight to keep them here, which we engage in, and we, and, you know, we send people to homes, you've been to homes, right? You know, we send people to homes, drag them out, but right now that's harder to do with just simply saying, you know, I'm sick, I have a fever, or whatever. I don't know. Does that answer the question? Yeah. What else are we missing on that? Why else does that, that number be, be higher than we ever want it to be?
Statistically, 2020, 2021, where we had that. Were we missing, kids missing more now than they did back then?
Yeah, because, yes, and that's part of like what I think Scott was saying, maybe what I was saying is we got to, we got to refocus on not letting them squirm out. And, and they're allowed to be out because of the public health issues. But Scott, go ahead. I noticed.
I call them navel dimer. That's a kid who misses Monday this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and next week, Thursday the following week, Monday, Tuesday, the week after that. It's, in, in, in some ways, you know, when, when a student's out six consecutive days, when you're looking, that's a COVID issue and, you know, there's more to that. There's, it, we have a percentage of our population who have comfortable keeping their children.
Yes. There, there was a percentage before COVID that were comfortable keeping their kids home, and it was scary. But that would be the battle. And, and because of COVID, there's more. And there's people, there's parents who still really, you know, and I'm not going to judge them, fear about their kid being in school. And there's teachers who fear about being in school.
Well, and comfortable may not also, it'll always be, it may also be, some parents may not have the same caring function for their, for their students. So it's not, it may not be that they're comfortable, it's that sometimes they may not feel they have a choice to dominate child or whatever. I remember Scott mentioning at reopening meetings that, uh, the staff was struggling with, uh, kids leveraging COVID to try to stay out. Right?
Adults do that.
Adults.
I wasn't going to go there, but you're right, you're right. And it didn't, and it didn't help. And, you know, I don't want to get into the social media thing, but it didn't help. I mean, I, my kids would complain that, why is this school district going to school less than we are? You know, why? Well, because we're a better school district. But, but in their eyes, it wasn't fair. And they, and some of them wanted, and so some of their peers felt like they didn't have to because other school districts chose, chose not to. So our kids felt like, oh, they don't have to, that I'm not going to that same day either, you know? So there's, there's that whole discussion. But I, I do remember, I do remember you mentioning that at one of the meetings. Do you have anything?
I'm assuming those are both excuse and unimportant, is that correct?
That's something to really focus in on. I would agree. That is another thing to focus in on. Hopefully, next year in, in September, almost all of this stuff is, is gone, hopefully. But no matter what, we, at minimum, need a plan. What's that? I know.
COVID is here to save value as, as a community need to. I was just like, we as a community need to reframe the, the presentation.
And there, and there are going to be scars. I mean, um, we, we talked about the mental health component. But it, it has the COVID and everything else, and the differences and struggle in life have affected children to be missing more school. It just has happened. And those are, those are real, right? So my three takeaways from your presentation are student attendance, behavior in classes, and gaps in classes. Those are three primary ones that I got. I think it would be.
And the admin team probably has some other things to add to that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just talking about what you, only you just mentioned so far. So it would be advantageous for all of us if, if we start talking about, um, some mechanism for each one of these categories from you as to how we can approach solutions. And I know that we're not going to fix everything overnight, but it would be great to have some ideas through the administration brought forward so that collectively we kind of try to attack this. So hopefully we'll hear something from you guys. All right? Now, thanks for taking the time to put that together. Any other public comment? Thoughts, gripes, anything? All right. Resolved that the Board of Education appoint Crystal? One last time for now. As clerk pro temp for this meeting. Motion, please.
A motion.
Patty. Cheryl. Any discussion on this? All in favor? All right. Now, for executive session. Resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss proposed pending or current litigation and collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Silver Service Law. Motion, please. Patty, second. Nicole. And just for clarity, uh, there will be no decisions made after this?
Um, there'll be an agenda item, um, most likely adopted after this. That's probably not worth sticking around for.
All right. So for the new board members, you know, if there's something that's significant, they have to have a vote. And you want to make sure that the, that the public knows that, that after executive session, we're going to have to make a decision. And if they want to stay, they can stay. A lot of times, it's just internal discussion and we don't need to stay. Nobody has to listen to it. They've already spent a lot of the time here already. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. All right. Thank you very much.
We'll do, we'll do it right here. Oh, sorry, we are inviting, for the record, we are inviting Chris from the government plaza firm into the session.
Dan, do you think?